Speak during the business portion of the meeting, provided. However, persons speaking during a public hearing are limited to between five and twenty minutes. The public is advised that copy of the Open Meeting Act is located on the north wall from Council Chamber, and one copy of all reproducible written material to be discussed at this meeting is available for examination or copying.
Yeah, bud.
I need that you.
Go ahead. Three minutes.
Wendy Dean, two zero seven North Spruce Street, Valley. I was coming about, I just purchased a building at one two four North Second Street. It's a little house, it sits all by itself. And I want to do a little, kind of a coffee shop, kind of like what Brew was. We'd have a little bit of food, but really doesn't have a commercial kitchen, and different beverages, non-alcoholic. And mainly just a little gathering place, especially the ladies in town really missing that. And I impulsively bought it, and I saw it, and I said, oh my gosh, it sits all by itself. It could be, you know, zone commercial, which it is. And at any rate, we thought about a drive-up window, but we're not going to do a drive-up window now. It's too expensive to do that. But for parking, our capacity would be twenty-five, would be max, because it's a small little house. So for the parking, we will have a double driveway, which will fit four cars. Across the street, there are two little houses, and then the dentist office. And I think only one of those houses is lived in, because I very seldom even see one car in front of it. As you turn the corner, on my property, the corner parking in the west, there should be street parking there. There's across the street, they've got a big driveway. In Catty Corner, towards the fire, the old fire department, there's a whole line of like ten parking that's diagonal. So I would like to feel assured that I would not have to add any more concrete to make a parking lot, or anything like that.
Is that in our business district, or is that residential?
What else?
It's commercial.
Well, we can't discuss this, because it's not an item.
That's my fault. It was supposed to be an item, that's my fault. So I can talk about it a little bit. So it depends on the code. If our code states that it needs onsite parking, it's going to require onsite parking. Yeah, and I don't believe that those streets are wide enough to provide street-side parking like our downtown, because you've got diagonal parking stalls off of the main roads. So, but again, I don't know a hundred percent.
There would not have to be diagonal parking, just like parking, there's not even anybody, there aren't even any houses. There's the one house, the one gal lives in, I don't think the dentist office, and then Catty Corner. And it just seems like, for me to have to pay to put in a parking lot for four or five cars, is a big expense.
But the ordinance is the ordinance, you know, we can't, we can't change it.
Yeah, and Greg will be reviewing those moving forward, but there are onsite parking requirements for commercial uses.
And that is zone commercial.
Correct, yes, it's zoned correctly.
I'd be curious what the provisions are for the distance from the business? Because if there is parking, for example, Catty Corner over by the old fire station. So there's street parking nearby, so I'd be curious, is there a perimeter associated with that?
I don't believe there is in that particular zone. And it specifies onsite parking is required, and the only place that onsite parking isn't required is in C2, which is our downtown commercial.
Right.
Because there's the diagonal parking right off of the, and there's no space to put parking on, for example, like the next building, or this one, technically there's parking for that, but you have parking in the front, so, yeah.
So part capacity is maximum twenty-five. That equates to what, four to five, a five hundred and fifty square feet?
Thirty percent of twenty-five.
Well, why don't you put it all together and bring it back to us?
That'd be eight parking stalls.
Because we can't take any action on it, if there's action, we're supposed to take it. At this time, so.
It'd be eight parking stalls.
Is there a possibility to expand our C2? Instead of just being commercial, be part of the business district?
Uh.
Would it be in that place?
For the intention of allowing street parking? That's gonna have to be a question for the street superintendent, and what those streets are allowed to handle.
Raise your hand, Greg, right here.
To be fair, even if I was saying that would be a decision he would make. But I think in general, you don't want to encourage people parking on the side of streets. That's just good planning, because they don't, unless they're ones like this that have designated parking stalls. Especially in commercially zoned area. I think in residential, lower impact, it usually, street parking is what it is, but again, that's.
Now, people that aren't necessarily from here are just gonna pull up in front of those houses and the dentist office and just park there, because it's gonna be open parking. I mean, it's a public street.
Well, again, let's get together and put it together and come back to it.
Okay, because I'd like to open this business, but I can't afford to spend thirty thousand dollars to put in parking for two cars to come. That didn't make any sense. Just one other thing that we came as a group of business owners about, and they'll take their three minutes, I'll just take one minute, is the city ordinances, I guess I don't understand, we're Douglas County, which is supposed to have laws where ordinances where buildings aren't allowed to be vacant for longer than two years, or they start to receive fines if they're not working on them or something. And we have only two blocks of businesses. We're trying to keep our businesses open. We have people come all the time, and our ladies, these are the managers and owners of a couple of the shops, we still have a couple more, asking for space, asking, do we know anybody, do we know any thing for sale? And we can't make anybody sell, but we should be able to not have them keep it vacant for fifteen years, like the one on the corner across from the library, and the old flower shop, which had been seven or eight years, that's been empty. And now we've got the next to the pharmacy, that little one, finally started on working on that a little bit. But, you know, is there a consideration to kind of change some of these ordinances? Even the, uh, the corner building here that Belmont brands is all full of paper storage, you know, paper, and, uh, you know, like the, you know, even John Poits, you know, like it's not open to the public. The, where the brew was, that's not open to the public. And it's like, we only have these two blocks, wouldn't it be beneficial to our community to be able to have thriving businesses there? Where we can actually support each other and come in and out? So that's my, that's my minutes, and I'll let the girls express their minutes.
Next.
Hi, my name's Diana Thornton, I own Sapphire Blue at the end of the block. Sapphire Blue Gifts, and the address one oh five North Spruce Street.
What, what do you want, sort of?
It's a gift shop called Sapphire Blue.
Okay.
All I wanted to say was, I'm just in support of that idea of an ordinance, so that, I can't tell you how many people have come into the shop and said, do you know any place, I would love to open this or that? And it's like, well, now, now we have the pharmacy that they could, you know, talk to, but a couple of the buildings, like Wendy said, have been emptied for many years. And it would be really nice if they could start working on them, if they don't want to fix them up themselves to lease, maybe they could put them up for sale, or if that could be kind of a requirement. And, and also make it so that it is retail, and not a closed office, so people can come and go to a lot of different shops. It would just be nice for our downtown, that's all. I love having my shop down here, and we've had a lot of people come in, and they really love it. And I've been trying to improve it, and do a lot of landscaping and everything on it. And it would just be really nice to have a lot of, because I have had many people have wonderful ideas. And I have their names and number, if anything ever opens up, I would call them, and they would want to come in and do something really nice for the town.
Well, I would assume, Wendy, that you guys have someone ask you that, you send, you send them over to Mr. Kingston and see if you.
We have, and he says, I'm not interested, stop sending me people, for, for years, it's been for years I've been sending people.
That's all I have.
And reinforce it, because he hasn't fixed up anything, it's been sitting there empty. He said it has cracked foundation, sell it as it is.
Hi, my name's Linda Boguetz, and I own Trinity Salon Spa here in Valley at three fifteen North Spruce Street. And I've been there for thirteen years. And I'm gonna be also reentering what the last two have said, and, you know, we both know, who owns? The one on the corner that's been empty for almost nine years, since Linda McDermott, who was there selling insurance. I'm sure you, some of the people know that, right? And she left, and the reason why she left was because all they did was raise the rent and not do any improvements. And it's been empty for nine years, and that's just a sore, as far as I'm concerned, in downtown Valley. I have at least a half a dozen people that have gone and wanted to buy that, and his answer is, well, I'll lease it to you. Now, why in the world, when he knows the people know the history of the man who's going to lease it? He's going, you're gonna go in there, there's numerous repairs that need to be done, the heating and the air doesn't work properly. I guarantee you that the electrical is outdated, as well as the plumbing. And I have also heard that the foundation is not very well at all. And he hasn't put anything other than a little bit of paint, and I know he maybe was forced to have to do some repairs to the foundation there that was being exposed, and that animals were getting down inside there. It's just that I don't understand why Omaha, like Wendy was saying, we've checked that out, that their ordinance is, if it's in a business district downtown, and we don't have much of one in town anymore, but if there's buildings there that are commercial, and someone owns them, and they're not keeping updated and keeping the repairs necessary, um, not leasing it properly, not wishing to sell it, well then, the city will start making you pay a fine every single month, to the tune of either five hundred or a thousand dollars a month. Guarantee you, that'll change his mind. But the ordinance has to be set, it's that in Douglas County, we are Douglas County. Why can't we make that ordinance the same here in the city of Valley? And then, the other building, where the masons have their building, we all know. I know a lot of faces here have known it for a long time before, that used to be a grocery store. Do you remember that? Not just one, it was twice, that was the first family, I can't remember, but anyway, the second one was Dick's. And he was in there before he built in Elkhorn. And ever since Dick left that building, it has been nothing but storage for paper. And really, we live in the twenty-some first century. Who in the world has to have all that paper sitting around? I know who, and I've talked to some of the masons about it, Frank Kirchman's being one of them, rest his soul. And he said the reason why is because of the dollar of money that Belmont pays them, pays their taxes and pays utilities. But what does that do for the town? Absolutely nothing. Not to mention, how long can somebody sit on a piece of property right over here next to Macavickus, which is a vacant lot? Who owns that? Kingston. Numerous people have asked to buy it, nope, I'll lease it to you. Now, who in their right minds is gonna lease a piece of property, they're gonna spend thousands of dollars to dig up the old church that's down there, and then start building? And lease it? That's insanity. And now we've got the, our theater that's just sitting there, that would make an amazing community project. Open that up, make it a theater again, make it community-oriented, go with this DC West and the high schoolers, they would love that. And have theater, and they work there. I'm just saying, there are some things that have to change, otherwise the town is dying, and we've got people building all around us. Not to mention, what happened to the Fairway? What's slowing that down?
Water, eighty stores.
What?
There's eighty stores that they're building right now, and they're on a list, and there's.
Fairway has eighty stores they're building, is that what you just said? Not just here in Nebraska, obviously.
There's no water, there's no sewers, there's no electrical, it'll fix fine.
The weather's been.
Yeah, I know the weather's been bad, and I, I understand that. And I was in Fairway just a couple of weeks ago, and I talked to some of the people there, and the guy in the meat department, and he said that we're probably looking at two years before it's ever completed. That's a long time.
It's just how long it takes.
Okay, so I have a question, what if, what about throwing this way out to Fairway? It's just gonna be a, now, their stores aren't that big anyway. Have you been to one, a Fairway? They're not that big, it's not a huge store like Family Fair, or Baker's, or anything like that. What about using the pharmacy? Say, hey, it's gutted up, there's nothing in it.
It's for sale.
And it's for sale, you could get in there, way in the back, put yourself your little meat market, and do your little shelves, blah, blah, blah. I mean, look at Rick's up in Dick's, I mean, up in Elkhorn, he's doing great, and it's not, and that thing's smaller than the pharmacy. I mean, that's something, I thought maybe we could throw that idea out to Fairway.
Thanks, Linda.
All right, you guys have a great day.
I'm Patty Stockhill, my address is fifteen Anderson Way in Uten. And I'm the manager of the store across the street called Retail Therapy. And we're always, you know, trying to get more people in the store, and if we could do something with these, the empty lots and the empty buildings, you know, that would bring more activity to downtown Valley, and help us with the stores. So that's mainly what I wanted to say, thank you.
All right, can we move on to?
Can I say one more thing on a, on a different topic?
No, we gotta move on, Wendy. Uh, I need approval, agenda. Motion to approve the agenda.
So, I'll move.
Kyle?
Second.
Mark?
Sorry. Hi.
Mark, second. Oh, favor say aye?
Aye.
I propose the same. Motion carried. Consent agenda, due to motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, if I just made any correction or adjustments. If aye, that's for motion. Brian?
Second.
Scott, second. Oh, favor say aye?
Aye.
I propose the same.
Sorry, apologies, gonna do the first two motion.
Scott, second. All right, item eight A, ordinance consideration recommendation to amend the existing section of the Valley, City of Valley zoning regulations relating to commercial design standards in designated commercial areas. I'll open the public hearing. Everybody wants to speak on that?
Larry, you want me to talk, or do you want these guys to present this?
No, you do it, no, John. We've had this at the meet for the last couple meetings, so it's finally bound to end.
Right, thank you, John Batch, two oh three North Spruce. We talked about this last time, we've had this a couple times, this is just the final sum total of all the changes that were made. And we heard it by Brunner, Greg, to speak to this too, but I think we've got everything in there that everybody had asked for related to this ordinance. So I'm happy to field any questions, but this really is what we talked about last time, bringing, bringing it back with all the changes that were asked for. And asking for a final vote here.
But you're right, I understand, Andrea did a lot of work on this.
Yeah, I mean, we met, oh, last week sometime, my concern was there was one where it stated like, after a hundred feet, you were free to do what you want, we got that removed, and then two, it was the, um, it was the, kind of, having something in there that states that you build that screening building first, or at least at the same time, and we've added that in there too, where the CO won't be given for the buildings behind until that screening building is done. So the couple issues I had with it were resolved in this particular change. So we just kind of removed some of the stuff, this, you guys, we all know that someone will look at that and say, a hundred and one feet, I'm gonna build back, and now there's no requirements at all. So we kind of just adjusted that to where the screening building has to be built at the same time in CO, before you're getting any of the ones behind.
And I noticed some of the percentages, glass and hard surfaces were modified just a little bit.
For, for the one behind, yeah, yeah, and there are, which makes sense, because if you've got that screened building up front, what's behind it is, in my opinion, the screening thing is doing what it's supposed to anyways, so. Right, right, yep.
Any other, go ahead, John.
I think the other thing that you had asked for was the map, as tiny as it is, it's, I think, accurate, thank you, Greg.
Get it handled.
So, I think that, that covers it, any other questions?
Please, we'll have a little bit better.
Thank you.
If anyone else wants to speak, that's a part of the public hearing, I'm excited. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Discussion by the finding members, if you have any other questions to run, or Greg or John, on this item? Yeah, all right, I ask for a representation, a motion, me?
I'm going to approve the recommended changes to design standards.
Kyle, second?
Yes.
Brian? Voice vote? Voice vote, John?
Oh, uh, sorry, uh, Kyle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Jeremy? Greg?
Yes.
Jen?
Motion carried. All right, item eight B, uh, which was flat water, space, champion short, consideration, we will redevelop the plan, that's been tabled.
Yeah, I can just speak on that quickly, um, they were wanting to get it on, and there were still some questions that Craig and Jeff were waiting for regarding some of the subdivision agreements and stuff like that, so, um, yeah, that's why. It's being tabled this month.
I make a motion to table this item.
Oh, second.
Kyle, second. Voice vote?
I'm sorry. Larry, any, I'll second. All right, voice vote, Kyle? Larry?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Jen? Greg?
Yes.
Jen?
Motion carried. Item nine, discussion only, ordinance amending zoning regulations relating to the use limitations within commercial and outdoor zoning districts. Just discussion only.
So we had originally discussed this, um, in the last meeting, and, uh, ended up looking at this a little bit different after that meeting. Room and I talked, um, a little with Andrea, and this was related to the, um, basically the crushed rock in commercially zoned areas, like the sales, trailer sales yard, and that kind of thing. And we had originally said it would be under conditional use permit, uh, there'd be a requirement around how much, uh, rock there could be, so on and so forth. When we talked, we said, let's simplify this, um, and make it easier to enforce as we go, and harmonize this along with our residential side. So what Room recommended, and I fully agree with, was the change that's been, been made here. So Room, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so, um, so we have it in here, of course I read it earlier, so we had, we had mentioned before, like a conditional use, and limiting it to a percentage. Um, my thought was, we've already did this, what was it, about a year ago, for the trailer and impervious for residential? So my thought was the same thing, we've got the impervious limitations to certain commercial. There are some that allow a hundred percent, but nothing is up there for paving a hundred percent either in those. So you've got the impervious percentage limitations based on the zoning already, and you're gonna be putting a building up, because how we adjusted this is, it has to be in the side or rear yard. So you're not gonna get someone who's gonna build their building in the way back, and then say, well, my construction lay down is all in the front, all the way up to the street, so they're gonna build a building first, which is gonna take up some of that impervious percentage, probably quite a bit. Wherever they park in the front has to be hard surface per, per our code. So they have all that concrete up front, so that's taking up more impervious, and then wherever they have their crushed rock in the side or backyards, is going to be counted as impervious as well. So they are hitting that number that we allow max impervious anyways for C1 and C3. So that's kind of where we changed it, I think, last week, two weeks ago, we were talking about it, it kind of hit me, where I was like, we've already done this for residential, we could do very similar for, uh, commercial, and again, it's the side or rear yard, that way, because again, my only other concern was someone, hey, I'm gonna put my building right in the middle of this big lot, and I'm gonna put crushed rock all the way around, and again, that kind of defeats the purpose of these ordinances and these design standards, and making things look nice, so, which cuts it down with the side and rear yard requirement, so. And there's, there's screening requirements too, for laydown yards and stuff like that, if they happen to go next to a residential, there'd be screening requirements and stuff like that, so, nothing would change, except that you're allowing construction laydown yards as well, and you're limiting it to the side and rear yards of that building, so.
So this will come back next month? The side?
Yep.
And I think the only other thing we changed, Room, was the conditional use.
Yes.
That way.
Yeah, and with, with that side and rear yard, do you guys really want to see every time a plan comes up for a conditional use request for a laydown crushed rock that has the correct parameters in it? I mean, if it wasn't rear and side yard, I'd say, yeah, you guys probably want to look at it and make sure, but this is limiting enough, in my opinion, that it's, it's with our existing current code screening requirements and stuff like that.
Everybody that's doing it now is, they look decent.
Right.
You know, it's an obvious use.
And per, per our code already, because we thought of it, the second weeds start growing up, and rock starts being exposed to dirt, it is not maintained anymore, and we're in violation. So they better maintain it and keep it moving, than looking presentable, because we added that last time, again, to reference our utility trailers and stuff like that, so.
So if you have to answer your question, Larry, if I did, uh, you suggest that we bring this next time for action?
Somebody will remember that. John's gonna give it to you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got one more item here, uh, Room, uh, front and center there, Room, right up there.
Larry, I have some things to say too.
All right. I'm sorry, Room, I didn't get a key.
We had lunch earlier, he's fine. I really just wanted to update you guys on kind of our plan with Room's departure at the end of this week. Obviously, we have to continue doing inspections and all of this kind of stuff, so, um, Council President Batchar has offered to help out with some of the reviewing things, he obviously has some expertise in this area. So he might be handling some of the questions and that type of thing, Greg's also gonna step in and do some stuff. And then Douglas County is also going to be handling the inspections and residential plan review?
Residential plan review, yeah, not commercial.
Not commercial, that will continue to be our contractor. Also, Kendra, the utility clerk, will be kind of the interim administrative assistant, whether or not you knew that or not, the administrative assistant also left last week, so as of the end of the day Friday, we do not have a building and zoning department, so we will be all working together to do what we can, so, just, I mean, if you guys have questions, obviously, start with Christie, and then she will funnel them to whoever needs to answer the question, but like I said, John Batchar might help and step in with some of the resident questions and those types of things, because I obviously do not know the zoning like the back of my hand, like Room does, but Greg also will be helping, so.
As chairman, I'll lend you Greg and Brian and Kyle.
Perfect, thank you. Your mom is holding them, we appreciate that.
At least have expertise.
But honestly, if you guys are willing to, to answer some of those questions as well, we would greatly appreciate it, because we can't, we can't just stop doing this work, and so we need to get it done. Any other questions about that, before you make Room come back up here?
Next, current in line to take over Room's spot, searching and.
That's an excellent question. We will...
We're going to find somebody good as him.
I don't, I don't know. Maybe he has friends.
We have to land, no.
Yeah. It was really an option. Uh, yes, I mean, ultimately, we will do that. However, it's, we kind of have to do it a little bit in an order because we, the city administrator should be the person that's hiring for that person that will report to them. So my hope would be to get somebody in to try to help on the city administrator's side, um, even if it's on an interim basis because, um, fortunately, I also have a full-time job and I don't have a lot of extra time on my hands to do that. So my plan is to start, my focus right now is on getting somebody in to help with the city administrator's side of it and then that person will help with the rest of them. I don't, I don't know that I feel confident hiring a building inspector not being the person who they would report to. So my hope would be to have an administrator first.
Can, will Dave come back?
I don't know.
Dave?
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to check into some of those options.
It is good.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you all.
Bye, Rob. We've got a little deal here that Mark wrote up and we've all agreed to it. He's treated it.
General country boy, I really wish to extend my deepest gratitude for your exceptional service and dedication throughout your tenure. As you step down from your role, I'd like to take this moment to reflect on the profound impact of your work and the legacy you leave behind. Your unwavering commitment to maintaining the highest standards in building safety and code compliance has been vital in shaping our city's landscape. You've been a steadfast guardian of public welfare, ensuring that our homes, businesses, and public spaces were not only beautiful, but above all, safe. Your responsiveness in addressing concerns, clear guidance in complex situations, and willingness to collaborate with developers, contractors, and residents alike have fostered a spirit of trust and cooperation throughout the community. To your expertise, diligence, integrity, countless process, projects have flourished under your watchful eye, each one a testament to your professionalism and meticulous attention to detail. Your guidance and insight have allowed me to make decisions that I hope in retrospect will benefit the city of Valley. Thank you for your service to the city, but more specifically this commission. Right here. Thanks, Roone.
Thanks, you guys. That's really nice to hear. It was a, it was a pleasure working with you guys, honestly. Planning Commission has been always fun. So Larry, it's partly your fault. You guys had to deal with me talking up here almost every single planning commission and...
Well, you get the big bucks, right?
So, no, I really appreciate it.
Do you want to, do you want to address where you're going?
Uh, not publicly. I'm staying in the construction industry and doing something that, um, I've been working towards for a while anyways at a part-time capacity. Um, and I'm really excited. Um, so I also, I just want to put it out there that, um, Cameron and I leaving at the same time was 100% coincidental. That wasn't a, a joint effort. It was just happened to work out with, uh, my new job that they wanted me to start at a specific time and, um, I was waiting for an offer letter and they got it right at the two-week mark. So, um, yeah, that was completely coincidental. So, uh, trying to get everything set up like Cindy was saying, to the best that I can of having Douglas County, we have a good relationship with them already. I do with doing inspections, so that should be good. Um, I've been throwing a lot on Greg's plate, so I'm sorry. You saw some of that today already. But he knows the zoning very well as well. So, um, at least making sure everyone's building what they should be with the correct setbacks, where they should be. Um, so third-party reviews, still going for the commercial signal. We've got third parties, so there's been trying to leave things. Uh, and then Kendra, right now, she's already in SmartCo, she has been for the last six months to a year, so, um, she should be able to keep things going as well. So.
So if you're giving a student his cell phone, will you get the number just in case?
Uh, I think, I think Larry's got my cellphone. And you, you've got my cellphone through Madison, so I'm not that hard to find. Yeah, you can figure it out. Um, so yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess you don't need this in your resume, but just copy it.
It's nice. I might, I might hang it up, I like it. We're on Facebook though. No, one thing's already made, it's why I'm Facebook.
Every time she's...
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
All right, that's the motion to adjourn. So move. Greg? I'll second it. All in favor?
All right.
John's going to do it.
They're perfect with stuff. They can all go to the...
Good job. Thanks again. You're a hard one.
But they've got the...
They've got PR.
Any mushy stuff.
Any mushy stuff. Really great job there. Any PR stuff.
Right down here. Okay. So she's a business. And she's... She's not required to have a...
She's not required to have a...
She just went in there.
That's great.
She was...